This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 4th, 2017, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Assistive listening devices are available, and if you would like to come up and speak, please speak into the microphone. Mr. Hulsoth, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Mittler.
Here.
Councilman Fine. Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim.
Here.
Councilwoman Wachovitz.
Here.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held September 19th, 2017, as distributed? So moved.
I'll second.
Okay.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman, or yeah, Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz.
Yes.
All right. We are going to be tabling number five on our agenda. Peggy could not make it with us tonight, and so she will take the oath of office at a later date. So this is one of those nights where we get to honor some of our officers for their incredible work. You'll hear me mentioned later in my report. Highland Park was found to be the third safest municipality in the state of New Jersey. And we owe all of that to our men and women in blue, and I want to thank everyone for their service to our community and our residents. But tonight, Chief, I think you have some special accolades to share with us.
Thank you for coming out tonight to this. As the mayor said, this is one of two meetings that the mayor and council graciously give us some time where we are able to recognize the first responders who may have responded to some unique situations or went above and beyond in the call of duty. Before we do that, though, I just wanted to thank all of our first responders, many who can't be here tonight, but our fire and first aid. Our first aid squad is totally volunteer, and our fire department is largely volunteer, and they answer the call 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. They're always ready to help out. So our great thanks to all of our wonderful first responders who do great work every day. Having said that, tonight, we're going to highlight two separate noteworthy incidents by members of our police department. And the first incident involved Lieutenant Gary Pannicella, Sergeant Jason Culver, and Patrolman Brian O'Mara. So I would like to ask that they step forward, please. This is a pretty incredible story. On October 12th, 2017, at 1:41 PM, police headquarters received a 911 call from a contractor stating that his friend had just had a serious accident with a circular saw and had severed his hand. Upon arrival, the officers immediately assessed the situation, and Patrolman Brian O'Mara quickly applied a tourniquet to the victim's arm to control the bleeding. Our officers recently have received training and tourniquets and other items that they carry from the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. So fortunately, we now are equipped with those items, and it sure came in handy that The officers assessed the situation quickly and decided at that point to immediately transport the victim to Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Hospital in New Brunswick. They knew that time was of the essence. Sergeant Culver drove the victim while Lieutenant Pannicella was in the backseat administering first aid to the victim in the rear of the car. Patrolman O'Mara took other immediate measures to preserve the hand to help give the victim his best chance of recovery. Because of the quick response and actions of these officers, the victim underwent successful reattachment surgery and is progressing very well today. In fact, we are happy to have that individual here tonight. His name is Mr. Robert Shangle, and he would like to say a few words to the officers. So, Mr. Shangle, feel free to come up. We're happy to have you here this evening.
First, I want to thank them all, and this is my first chance to really get. Can't thank you enough. Because if it wasn't for them, I might not even be here. But because of them, I have my arm back, and I can actually move it, which is a good thing. I'm just glad that they got there as fast as they did, and they assessed what they had to do, and they got it done quickly. I think we missed the hospital in like two and a half minutes. Who was driving? I'm glad you like to drive fast. I am very happy. So I have to thank them, because if it wasn't for them, like I said, I might not even be standing here, because I could have bled out. But thank you so much.
So I would like to respectfully request that the mayor come down and our Chair of Public Safety, Elsie Foster-Dublin, come down. The mayor will read proclamations to the officers as Councilwoman Foster-Dublin hands out service pins for lifesaving.
Gentlemen, whereas on October 12th, 2017, Lieutenant Gary Pannicella, Sergeant Jason Culver, and Officer Brian O'Mara responded to a medical call for assistance on South Eighth Avenue, and whereas on arrival at the scene, officers determined that there had been a serious construction accident, and a worker had accidentally severed his hand, and whereas the officers immediately applied a tourniquet to the victim and rendered first aid for the potentially life-threatening injury, and whereas officers determined that time was of the essence and very important, and decided to immediately transport the victim to Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Hospital, and whereas the quick actions of the officers, along with an immediate transport for treatment of the victim resulted in the successful treatment and reattachment of the victim's hand, and whereas the efforts of Lieutenant Pannicella, Sergeant Culver, and Officer O'Mara represents the best traditions, skills, training, and dedication to preserve life. Now therefore, I, Gailboro Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby issue this lifesaving commendation to the following police officers of the Highland Park Police Department for their roles in saving a life. Lieutenant Pannicella, Sergeant Jason Culver, and Officer Brian O'Mara, on behalf of the people of Highland Park, I offer them my heartfelt thank you for a job well done and keeping Highland Park safe. And I know you guys do this in different ways every single day that you are on the job. Thank you.
As Chair of Public Safety, I can't say thank you enough that you put your lives on the line every day keeping all of Highland Park safe, but this one particular day, I think you went above and beyond the call of duty. You did not wait around for the ambulance to respond or for someone to come in town to assist. You took the initiative, and you drove the individual, Mr. Shangle, all the way to New Brunswick to make sure that that arm could be saved. It's that bravery, and it's that forward thinking that keeps us all safe in Highland Park. And again, I want to say special thank you to all of you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call up Sergeant Ted Haas. That's our next individual that we're going to be recognizing today. Sergeant Haas is being recognized for something that we don't typically give out service ribbons or proclamations for, but nonetheless, it's as heroic as any other efforts of any police officer, albeit in a different way. I'll explain. On July 3rd, 2017, a woman who resides in Highland Park walked into police headquarters to report a theft of her purse. Sergeant Ted Haas spoke with the victim and found out that she is the mother of two children, one of whom is autistic, which requires her to spend the vast majority of her time caring for him. She also relies heavily on social service assistance to make ends meet. The victim was very concerned because her purse contained her county identification card, her driver's license, her social security card, several debit cards, and finally, her EBT card, which is an electronics benefit transfer card, which allows her to buy her groceries and food for her family. Sergeant Haas learned that the victim was supposed to go for food shopping that day, but she had no way of purchasing food without the EBT card, and it is a lengthy process to replace it. At this point, Sergeant Haas proceeded to go above and beyond the call of duty. He selflessly provided the victim with $200 in cash from his own money so she could buy food for her family. And he further made arrangements so that the victim could receive transportation to the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission to obtain a new driver's license. The incident was brought to my attention through another officer. Sergeant Haas never said a word to me about it, not surprisingly. The last thing Sergeant Haas would want was to be recognized for what he did. He was not seeking recognition from the department, nor did he want anything in return. In fact, I had to kind of talk him into agreeing to let me bring him up here tonight. However, I felt it is important for all of you to know, because this speaks volumes about his character, compassion, and commitment to go out of his way to help those he comes into contact with. I wasn't surprised at all when I heard of Sergeant Haas's actions, because I've known and worked with him for many years. But I also would not be surprised at all to hear about any of our officers doing something similar, as this is the type of people that we have in our police department. This was further demonstrated by the generous actions of our local PBA 64. When this was later brought to their attention by other officers, they insisted on reimbursing Sergeant Haas for the $200 that he had taken from his pocket. As Chief of his department, I am proud of all of our officers and their commitment to making Highland Park a safe and wonderful community, and I'm very proud of your actions, and I want to publicly thank you and recognize you for that. Thank you, Sergeant. That's what we have tonight. Before I turn it back over to the mayor, I just wanted to thank Andrea Bay and Kim Perkins. They always come through with refreshments and make arrangements with cookies and whatnot that you'll soon enjoy. So thank you all for coming out. Thank you to all our first responders once again for all they do all year long, and I will turn this back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Officer Haas. The more I get to work with our police and all of our public safety employees here, the more I come to really appreciate and know the things they do that many of us don't ever get to hear about. They are really an integral part of what and who we are here in Highland Park, and I'm honored to have them on our team here and working with all of our residents on our behaves. So thank you again. And without any further delay, there are some refreshments in the hall, so I hope you can all join us. Let's take a 15-minute break. Okay, we can proceed. Okay, we're going to go on to council reports. I'm going to start on my right this time. Councilwoman Kim, do you have a report for us today?
Yes, just some short items. Today, our seniors went on a trip to the Hunterdon Hills Playhouse for an afternoon show, a Playhouse Christmas, and lunch. Please stop by the center or visit our website to see our upcoming trips. And join us at Bathory on Monday, December 11th, from 11:30 AM to 2:00 PM for our senior holiday party, and enjoy musical entertainment by Gordon James, and the cost is only $10 per person. On Saturday, December 16th, join us at the Senior Youth Center for our annual Lions Club Holiday Party. The timing, it starts at 11:30 AM and ends at 1:00 PM. Dancing and delicious lunch is provided by the Lions Club, and this event is absolutely free. On November 7th, the Arts Commission held an improv workshop, and it was attended by half a dozen Highland Park residents. It was very fun and successful. On November 18th, the Highland Park Swing Jazz Ensemble debuted a performance at the Senior Youth Center. It was 80-plus people in attendance, and it was a wonderful success. This past Saturday, the Arts Commission also held their holiday arts and craft bazaar. We moved it to downtown, which was very positive, responses from the vendors and shoppers alike. And we're continuing to work with the New Brunswick Arts Council on a window art walk for January 15th called "Windows of Understanding." The theme is seeing through hate. And we're also working on a digital mobile art walk for shoppers and residents to be able to take a tour of the art in the windows using their phones, mobile devices, or from home on their computers. Our Band-Aid project for 2018 has turned into a Band-Aid bench project that we're working on, and we're looking for one of the pocket parks to actually install the bench. So stay tuned for more details on that. For next year, we're also working on a series of pop art panels to talk about famous Highland Park artists, which we know there are a lot that hail from Highland Park, and the pop art movement of the '60s and '70s, which I'm going to be attending so I can find out, learn something about that. The rec committee met last night. Very soon, we're going to have online registration, and that's moving forward, so hopefully, it will make signing up for recreation programs much easier. We've also discussed very small increases in some of the rec programs. Nothing has been finalized yet, but next year, we will be rolling out a new price list. With that, I'm also going to be looking for more sponsors to team up with the rec department and its various ways local businesses can sponsor with the rec department. And that is it for my report.
Thank you. If I could, I just want to let everyone know, something else happened to you this week, didn't it?
No. Yes.
Councilwoman Kim got married. We all wish you the best of luck and many, many years of happiness.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot going on in public work, so bear with me. First of all, just a note, I'm sure everyone on Grant Avenue is very happy because the project is wrapped up there, and I'm sure everyone on Felton is happy because the project is moving forward finally.
Yes.
I came by to make sure, because you and I talked about that. Leaf collection goes on, I know I mentioned it last time, that due to the leaves dropping so late, even though climate change is fake news, the collection will continue until late December and probably January. We discussed it at our DPW meeting this morning. There are still some bags left free for residents. There are not many. There's a stack right in the corner at DPW's office, so if you still need bags or want to do the cleanup for the late leaves, please pick some up. Bulk trash pickups are scheduled for tomorrow, December 6th, on the North Side, Business District and Triangle, and next Wednesday, December 13th, for the South Side. And despite the unseasonable weather and the uncertain forecast for the winter of 2017-18, DPW is already proceeding to get prepared for snow removal. They're brining 5,000 gallons of brine, and if you remember, last year, everybody was asking questions about the white stripes on the streets on the night before a snowstorm. Brine is a liquid salting agent. It's spread by trucks before the snow falls, and it cuts the use of salt dramatically, not only for the cost of putting it on the roads, but for the wash down that then goes into the storm sewers and onto people's lawns. In addition, we made an agreement with Middlesex Water to supply them on occasion as needed with a small briner at 150 gallons a time, because they do need to service in our area, and they also will keep their headquarters and their purification plant open as well. We're moving forward. It's on the agenda tonight for the capital purchases for the RTV vehicle. What that is, is some people think it's just a small, all-terrain vehicle. It's actually a fairly large-sized commercial vehicle, but it can take a snowplow, it can take a brining tank, it can take a small dumpster, and it's small enough to actually move up on the sidewalks and even across the bridge to aid in a lot of different tasks, and much more accessible. In addition, we'll also be moving forward this month with the capital improvements for the next one of the one-armed bandits, the one-man garbage truck collections. The chassis is actually in stock in Edison, which should speed things up dramatically because it won't have to be manufactured. And I'm looking forward to that purchasing being completed as soon as possible. We've made arrangements through DPW to increase the recycling of electronic devices. Starting on January 18th, we'll be able to recycle discarded desktop printers and fax machines, which were excluded previously. They will have to be dropped off down at DPW, but we can now take those machines, which sometimes we're just getting dumped into regular garbage and sometimes being excluded and left on the curb with the yellow sticker. But now, starting in January, we'll be able to pick them up. Regarding the PSENG solar farm, coincidentally, during our DPW meeting this morning at 8:00, we received a call during the meeting from New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and they were asking us how we were doing with our planning. We told them that, you know, we had our plans in place, we knew what we wanted to do, but because of the recent increase in sites that they wanted removed, that we were going to revisit our plan, and we would be discussing that further with PSENG. It's not a dramatic increase. It's a fairly large increase, but what they've done is originally, they wanted some of the concrete, surface concrete removed. They've expanded the area of removal, even down into the woods adjacent to the site, so that we have to expand our plan a little bit with PSENG. But it's interesting that they were calling us to ask us how we're doing, as opposed to us calling them and saying, "Could you please give us any bit of information that you possibly can?" With regard to sustainable Highland Park, they were quite busy this fall. As you know, we've been reporting on the, excuse me, the plastic bag reduction program. We reviewed the progress of that program at the November meeting. You'll notice that they've put up the signs in a lot of the parking areas, including one in the area where the store didn't want it, but it is located there, reminding you, "Take your bags out of the car." Number one problem with using recyclable bags is not that people don't have them, not that they don't want to use them. You know, the short one-bag stop will sometimes mean that you get a plastic bag, but for those of us that go to do our shopping, we just don't feel like opening the trunk to get the big pile of bags out. So I've found twice that it's reminded me to open the trunk and get my bags out and use them. So those who are around. In addition, they're working on, now working on collating the data from the recent plastic bag survey, and they got some hints on research information on looking at how other municipalities have addressed either use of restrictions on plastic bags. I was also advised that, by the chair, that she's working with Borough Administrator on possible grants to install more of the water bottle filling stations around Borough facilities. I think there are two, if it's not the middle school, it's the high school. They're like water fountains made to be able to fill water bottles. People bring recyclable water bottles. If anybody's tried to balance the stream on a water fountain and try to fill it up without getting your suit wet or your shoes wet, you'll know that they're quite a boon.
Like at the gym.
What's that?
Like at the gym.
Like at the gym, yeah. So anyway, that's moving forward as well. On the Environmental Commission at the November meeting, we got a number of updates, including the PSENG solar farm. There are some projects that Environmental Commission will be working with the Borough in 2018. There are new riparian buffer zone requirements. One whole side of the town is a riparian buffer along the Raritan. The restrictions changed some of the zoning, some of the buffering that are required, and the Environmental Commission has asked that they work with the Borough to move that forward. Then in addition, our stormwater permits have to be renewed for 2018, and there are new regulations and requirements. Several of the members have gone to some of the training down in NJDEP and some of the nonprofit training, so we'll be working on those as well. They also asked very simply, because of a very silly question, that communications and IT maybe update the Google Maps in Highland Park. There was a debate as to what parts of the environmental center and the plant preserve are actually Highland Park, and we discovered that some of the maps are really extremely out of date. Not that it's necessarily ours to correct, but a lot of residents look on the site to look at Highland Park on Google Maps. Finally, Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Obviously, the planting season is just about over, the arborist season is almost over, but as a result, we got stacks started on the planning for the 2018 tree replacement program. They did have submitted, they passed a resolution for next year's allocation from the tree replacement fund. That's moving forward, and the site mapping and listing, many people may not know it, but over the last year, they did a project to identify all the species of trees and the locations. Grew out of a survey to determine condition, you know, because we've had some of the old trees that were planted back in the '20s are dying, are dangerous. But as a result, they started inventorying them. That's been digitized. It's actually keyed to a map of Highland Park, an outdated Google map, and that project moved forward as well. Finally, residents who wish to have a tree planted in the public verge in front of their home, their applications are online. In addition, we now have posted a list of rec- In addition, we now have posted a list of recommended species, so that you can, uh, some people may not like this kinda tree, but they like that kinda tree, so they're on the list. And you can get more information from the, uh, from the volunteers, uh, some of the contact information is on the website. But just a reminder, the envi, next Environmental Commission is tomorrow night, six, uh, December 6th, at the Environmental Center at 8 o'clock. The next Shade Tree Advisory Committee is Wednesday, December 13th. And the next Sustainable Highland Park meeting is Wednesday, December 20th. Please come out, as I say all the time, this is where the nuts and bolts and the small things in town get done, the things that make our environment and our town the way it is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Um, Councilman George, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for the update on, on the road reconstruction. Um, my, my two-year-old is, is particularly, um, entertained by, uh, all the trucks. I don't think we want them to go away, just, just yet, just yet. But, uh, no, they're, they're, they're doing an amazing job. Um, just a few things, um, some exciting news out of our Human Relations Commission. Please join us, uh, this Thursday for an exciting new initiative, the Highland, the Highland Park Human Relations Commission Book Club. Uh, this initiative will feature texts that explore racial complexities and cross-cultural understanding, and we hope you'll join us. For our first meeting this Thursday, uh, at the Senior Youth Center, we'll discuss "Everything I Never Told You" by Celeste Ing. Uh, her, this is a beautiful debut novel, and it's about her mixed-race family living in the 70s in Ohio. Um, and then, uh, just, just a teaser, the tragedy that will either be their undoing or their salvation. Uh, it is, I won't tell you what happens, I won't tell you which one, or both, or neither. Uh, um, this is part of an ongoing series, uh, so, so please stay tuned. You know, this is, uh, central to the mission of the Human Relations Commission, promoting cross-cultural cu, cultural understanding, um, and through a literary's per, perspective. So, stay tuned for 2018. Uh, we look forward to developing this program more with additional books, maybe featured speakers who will help conduct the, the discussion. Um, so lots to come. Uh, thank you to, uh, uh, Human Relations Chair Ashton Burrell and Commissioner Julie Luck for, uh, running with this, and, um, this is, I am a, I am a proud book club member here. Um, Highland Park Gives a Hoot will hold its regular, uh, meeting next Monday, December 11th, at 7:00 PM here at Borough Hall in the lower-level conference room, please come. Also, uh, just a note, Gives a Hoot in cooperation with Global, with the Global Grace Cafe will provide a lunch program, uh, Tuesday, December 26th through Friday, December 29th, for all Highland Park school-aged children, K through 12. Lunch will be provided between 11:30 AM and 2:00 PM each day. No vouchers are needed during the winter break, but please comple, uh, complete our short survey, which can be found at www.hpborough.com, and on our Facebook page using handle HPGIVESAHoot. The Commission for Universal Access will host its regular meeting on Monday, December 11th, at 7:30 PM here at Borough Hall in the Berman Conference Room across the hall, please come. The Highland Park Board of Health will meet next Tuesday, December 12th, at 7:00 PM here at Borough Hall in the lower-level conference room, please come. And please note that this is a new date because our regularly, our regularly-scheduled December 14th date was rescheduled. The Highland Park Housing Authority will hold its regular meeting next Wednesday, December 13th, at 6:30 PM, uh, next door at the Samuel Cronin Building at 242 South 6th Avenue, please come. The Highland Park Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs will hold its final meeting of 2017, next Wednesday, December 13th, 7:30 PM, at the Senior Center Youth, um, at the Senior Youth Center Library, please come. And then finally, just, just, just related, I wanna just remind everybody, um, that the, our municipal ID program launched on October 31st, please get yours here at Borough Hall. And just a few things to note, applicants must be at least 14 years of age and a resident of the Borough Highland Park. Applicants must show proof of identity and residency. Office hours for applications are Tuesdays from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM, and Thursdays from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Identification cards are valid for two years from time of issuance. Identification cards are intended to assist in the identification of the valid cardholder for the purposes of obtaining services from the Borough of Highland Park and at the discretion of businesses within the Borough of Highland Park. This is a developing program, so much to look for in 2018 as well. Uh, there is a cost, it's $15 for adults, $7 for seniors, youth, and veterans. However, applicants can request a hardship waiver with no questions asked. You can view additional details, um, about the card and review the application on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com. That's my report, thank you.
Thanks, Matt, I just wanna add to what you mentioned about the HP Gives a Hoot lunch. It's going to be served at the Senior Center this year for the week of Christmas break. Um, all right.
Thank you, Mayor.
No worries. Um, Councilwoman Foster Dumblin, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I do. Um, just more bragging rights for Highland Park. We had a wonderful public safety display tonight, and proud to be a part of the team where I live in a town where public safety is our priority. And leading into that, uh, more bragging rights for us in Highland Park, that we were ranked third in the state of New Jersey of, uh, being safe. The mayor mentioned it before, and I'm just so happy that we live in a town where it's not only being safe, that we take care of each other during all kinds of emergencies. So kudos to Highland Park and its public safety team. Also, our municipal court is ranked second in Middlesex County for efficiency, deliverance, and keeping on top of everything, so again, we're in the ranking all around. Uh, just an update, we had a ribbon cutting on our teen center two weeks ago, and if you have an opportunity to go next door, you'll see that the concrete is already being poured, and there's work going on there, so I will be keeping you abreast as the developments come along. Check us out on Facebook to see the progress. Um, as we, as much as we get updates, I will take pictures and I'll post them on the Facebook page, you can see the process, and you can be a part of it. Um, with that being said, we wanna keep everyone very safe. And as we are approaching our winter season with inclement weather, and I hear that in the next two weeks, we're supposed to have snow, I just wanna remind everyone that when it snows, please, please remove the snow after snowfall. Um, for the vendors, please make sure that you, your businesses stay, uh, thriving, and that people have access to come into your, into your establishment. So please remove the snow after snowfall, remove the snow in the, in the curb cuts. And for residents, please let us all keep everyone safe and remove the snow. If you need assistance with, with snow removal, then this is mostly for seniors. There is a list at our police department, you can call after the snow falls, and, um, high school seniors are available. Of course, there's a, a minimal cost, but they are available to come and do some snow removal. And with that being said, about safety, I just wanna share a very personal note. Uh, we had Veterans Day, and it was a wonderful Veterans Day parade that we had recently in, in November, and thank you for all, everyone who have served. I was also have the honor and the privilege to be presented with a flag when my cousin retired from the Air Force, uh, two weeks ago. So that was a wonderful honor to be presented with a flag, and it, it's, it's much more emotional than you see on TV. It was a very emotional time for me, and I wanna thank her for her service and dedication, and thank all the veterans for what they do in keeping us safe. With that said, I wanna wish everyone a happy and safe holiday, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a few things, um, on the agenda tonight is, uh, the second reading of a, uh, downtown redevelopment ordinance amendment. Uh, this is the first time in more than 15 years that we are signing off on a new redevelopment amendment, uh, with a redeveloper on the avenue. Uh, our redevelopment agency worked with Mr. Anton Popov for a little while, but, um, it was really at the beginning of this year when we formed our rehabilit, area, re, area in need of rehabilitation screening committee, that things got moving. And, uh, through that committee and through our redevelopment agency, we've been able to come up with a, an agreement for Mr. Popov, who owns what was formerly the International Store on Raritan Avenue near North Second. Um, he will be redeveloping his property, expanding it about fourfold. He'll be creating, uh, double the retail space, uh, in the front, um, below, and additional retail space in the rear, as well as apartments above, which falls straight in line with our master plan. Uh, this is a very important, um, project that we're working on. Again, it's the first time in nearly 15 years that we've seen a new building ready to be built on the avenue, and we're very eager to get this going. It'll send a strong single, signal out to other developers that Highland Park means business. A few other things, please. Um, this holiday season, Highland Park has become the number-one location for several central New Jersey pop-up shops. We love pop-up shops. They offer unique retail options for both the seller and the buyer. Small retailers with unique items for sale are able to quickly open temporary shops with very little overhead. Shoppers get the chance to visit, uh, variety of merchants with a great variety of wares. We also hope that as these small businesses gain a following, they'll open their own shop in our town someday. Thanks to everyone who participated in organizing for these pop-up shops. Uh, thanks to Main Street for spearheading it. They also worked on one, the Holiday Arts and Crafts Bazaar with our Arts Commission. Uh, thank you to the property owners that let out their spaces, thanks to the merchant, merchants, and thanks to all the shoppers that just made this season an amazing shopping success. Uh, there'll be one more, uh, there'll be one more pop-up shop the weekend of December 16th and 17th, and that will be again at 431 Raritan Avenue at Greenhouse Studios. Uh, also, a couple of more events for the holiday season. Our annual downtown Hanukkah party on the first night of Hanukkah, which is Tuesday, December 12th. The evening starts at 6:00 PM downtown, uh, at our Main Street building. We hope to see you there for the annual menorah lighting. Also, on Saturday, December 16th, at 7:00 PM, our outdoor movie theater will be showing the very hysterical movie Strange Brew. It'll be held indoors at Pinot's, and it's a fundraiser for the outdoor movie theaters, uh, events which begin in May and run through September every year. So please join us for that. Our Kwanzaa celebration will be held on Tuesday, December 26th, at Kinetics. We thank them very much for opening up their shops, putting on a great show for us. There's often live dance and music. And, uh, don't forget that there's a few more farmers' markets on Friday, December 8th, and Friday, December 15th, so join us there. And finally, our redevelopment agency meets this Thursday at December, uh, December 7th, at 7:30 in this room at Borough Hall. And our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee meets Wednesday, December 13th, at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Not this evening, dear.
Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Um, we were at the League of Municipalities a few weeks ago, and while we were there, um, the Borough of Highland Park once again was, um, won an award for, of honorable mention for innovations in government, for the work that's being done by our Arts Commission. Um, so shout out to Councilwoman Kim down there, and also Councilman, uh, George, who had been working with them in, at the earlier part of the year. They, they're a very active group. Um, our award was for bringing the arts to the streets so that all of our residents, no matter where they live or what economic strata they're in, could enjoy the arts. Um, uh, then also, I was privileged to, um, lead a few of the seminars at the League, uh, last week, and had a chance to highlight Highland Park's achievements. Um, so first, um, we were noted for being one of the 13 municipalities to get a grant from the BPU for creation of a municipal complex microgrid. Um, and, um, you've heard me speak about this before, but, um, I'm very excited about this opportunity for us to explore the possibility of having a microgrid that will allow our key buildings in this area, the schools, the police and public safety buildings, the, um, public housing and senior housing buildings, and this building and the Senior Rec Center, uh, are all included in the, um, microgrid, so if, if we lose power, as many of us have experienced in the past, this microgrid could kick in and keep our, um, important buildings open so that residents will have places to go to stay warm, stay dry, or cool, and, um, charge up their, uh, machines. Um, the other, um, uh, Complete Streets and, and Healthy Streets program that I, um, was, um, part of, allowed us to highlight all the things that our Complete Streets and Safe Walking and Cycling Committee have been doing, um, that also bring healthy opportunities to our residents. Um, and thank you to Council President Susan Welkowitz and her team that put together an excellent presentation for me at the event. And finally, the Mayor's Wellness Campaign initiatives. Um, I was able to bring people up to date on all of the different things that we're doing for wellness here in the community. And as I, um, uh, mentioned, and, uh, in the past, and, um, Councilman Hirsch and I had a chance to meet with the folks who are spearheading the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, and they included us and Raway in a grant from the Aetna Foundation to take us up a level to the Mayor's Wellness Campaign Plus level, um, where we will be having special programs on chronic diseases, weight loss, um, and basically how to keep our residents healthy. Um, uh, as Councilwoman Foster Dumblin mentioned, and, um, and I had a chance to say before, Highland Park's been getting some no, notice these days from niche marketing, which is a marketing company that does a lot of research and surveys of other New Jersey municipalities. So, um, yes, we were found to be number three in the state for safety, um, and number two in the state for best places to live for millennials, second only to Hoboken. Um, and, uh, yes, we do have millennial representation up here. And also, our school, the rating of our schools has steadily been increasing over the last couple of years, so kudos to the school board and, uh, Dr. Taylor. Um, to, just to talk a little more about, um, the... Oh, thank you, yes, the Council President just reminded me of another initiative. Um, we were also just recognized, um, for being a, um, heart, the, New Jersey's first HeartSafe Community because of our defibrillator program. And, um, Stop &amp; Shop, um, got a grant from a company to get their own defibrillator so that they fit in with our program here in Highland Park. Um, Councilman Hirsch, you've been working very hard with the, um, Mayor's Wellness Campaign on this, and Councilman Fine as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to shout out to, to Councilman Fine, who, who really laid the groundwork for this, but it was wonderful to see, to, to see this program move forward.
Yep, and, uh, we're excited about some new initiatives with the Mayor's Wellness Campaign going forward. Um, and finally, um, Council President Welkowitz had mentioned about the shopping downtown. Um, it's very, very exciting to me, as a mayor, to see so many new stores that have opened on the avenue thriving, uh, and the fact that most of them have been opened by people who actually grew up in Highland Park. So, um, they've become entrepreneurs here in Highland Park. They know what our residents want, and that's proving out in the success of their businesses. And that's all I've got. All right, we'll open up our 15 minutes of public discussion now. Does anybody have something they want to say? Mr. Gross?
Uh, Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens, Highland Park. Uh, at this time, uh, I would like to give thanks to all the families in Highland Park who came out this past Veterans Day to honor our veterans and to honor all, all their sons and daughters, husbands, members of the National Guard, all the reserves. Uh, it was an honor to listen to all the people that gave, uh, speeches in behalf of the veterans. Uh, and at this time, I always make sure that I bring out that every member of Highland Park, the residents, give thank- every member of Highland Park, the residents, give thanks to our doctors and nurses. There are, there are no words that I can find in the dictionary to express our thanks. The group of doctors and nurses served us well on the line, and every veteran listening to me, they know exactly what I'm talking about. It was a pleasure and an honor that all the families came out in full support, as I mentioned a second ago, and gave, gave their support to their sons and daughters and husbands. We appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none at this, I'm sorry.
Hello. So Abby Stern Cardinal and Harper Street. So I'm on one of the Facebook groups that people in town are a part of, and there's been some discussion in the last couple of days, I don't know if anyone saw it, about the, the location that used to be ba-ba-big and what's going on with that. And I thought I would ask, there's a lot of abandoned food there, which could create a health concern, but also, you know, could it be donated? Could something, I don't know if anyone else saw that discussion, but I thought it was interesting to bring up.
So the property was purchased, and I know Councilman Hirsch filled me in on some things today about it. Do you want to respond to that?
Sure. Yeah, the, so, so the Board of Health did, has, has been monitoring that, that property. It is, it is currently owned. It's all non-perishable food in there. So there's nothing that presents any kind of public health or public safety hazard there. But again, the property's been purchased and it's, you know, as, as long, as long, as long as it's up to code and it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't present any, any public health or public safety concern, that's, that's, that's really where that stands. Our, our code, our code enforcement officer and our health officer have, have looked into it. I agree that, you know, it would be nice to, to work with the, to, to work with the, the property owner to donate those foods, but at this point, the food's been there for a while, so I'm not certain that our, you know, community food pantry would want to accept it. And there's, at some point, that, that, that area is going to be, you know, put, put to a different use.
Are you able to say what kind of business purchased it? Or what, who's purchased the, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Just, just a new, just a new owner. Yeah, no, we don't know. It hasn't, there's been nothing.
Yeah. We, we don't know what plans are for that.
Hopefully, they donate the food or do something.
Thank you, Abby. Anybody else? All right, then, let's move on. Clerk, would you report on advertising ordinance concerning public discussion for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park 2010 concerning public discussions at meetings of the mayor and council was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Thank you. Any public hearing on this? Okay. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the downtown redevelopment ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County amending the Borough of Highland Park Downtown Redevelopment Plan dated September 13, 2005, as amended and supplemented, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing on this? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the, to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Absolutely.
And this is the property that Council President Welkowitz spoke about before. Okay. May I have a resolution to approve the budget transfers?
So, so moved.
I'll second.
Oh, they were?
Okay, can I have a motion to table the budget transfers?
So moved.
I'll second that one, too.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the following items, 1217-362 through 1217-375?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
With correction to 374, yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other public discussion at this time? Mrs. Bickard?
Ruth Bickard, 307 Magnolia Street. I would like to bring to your attention, if you don't already know it, that this amplification system, I can't hear you even when you're speaking to your microphone. And I have hearing aids, and I'm going to get replacement hearing aids, God willing, on Thursday that should be even stronger than the ones I have. So maybe you can improve the power.
Borough Administrator?
I'm glad, I was worried you weren't going to bring it up because we did look into it after you raised it at the last meeting. And as it happens, our court recording system is going to be replaced, and we think that the, the two things may be related, and we're going to address them all next year when we buy the new machinery. We're going to make sure we know how to adjust the controls for that.
When you say next year, is that next December?
No, early next year, because we, we need to have the recording work, the courts need it, the council needs it. So we just don't have the budget for it this year, but we're going to, we're going to do it early next year. But, and I, I'm, in the meantime, I'm going to see if we can fiddle, but I'm really scared to because this thing is on the fritz. So we did look into it, though.
Okay. You said something about the leaf bags that were available. How about a schedule for us residents? I live on a street where on my side of the street, I'm the only owner occupied resident. All the others have students or a couple of couples are there. And I don't see anybody coming through, girdling up the leaves. The bags go when they come and pick up the garbage. Every day, I, I have a little what I call a pithel tree, whose leaves were gone three weeks ago. But my lawn is covered almost every day from across the street and from next door to me because they have these old 60, 80-year-old trees there.
Are, are you saying they're not raking their leaves after?
No, because their students will live there.
Uh-huh. So that is something that you, Council President Welkowitz, can you bring that to the attention of code enforcement?
Now, I want to go after those high school students to see if I can get them, I'll pay them something.
Well, I think they have to maintain, any property owner has to maintain the sidewalk. So if, are there leaves all over the sidewalk then, too, you're saying?
There is, there are some leaves on sidewalk, but they're on their lawns, they're on the strip between the sidewalk and the street. Get a little bit of wind, it's been a windy fall, and they all land back on the lawn. I can clean up and bag them. They've been very helpful down at, at the Senior Center, so I don't have to go traipsing all the way down there.
Right.
And I fill them up. And then the next day, it doesn't look like done anything.
Right. We'll look into that.
It, you know, and, and it's on my feet, my dog rolls in it.
Yeah.
Somebody said something about on Thursday evening, see, because I didn't hear, there's some book discussion. Where is this?
Councilman Hirsch, would you like to discuss that?
Thank you, Ms. Bickard. And actually, I, I live just a block or two away from you, and I, I did see you picking up leaves the other day. I was going to wave, but I didn't want to.
So where's?
Oh, I was driving. Oh, sorry.
Where does it take place?
Oh, sorry, sorry. So it's, this is, this is a new book club out of the Human Relations Commission.
Yeah.
And the book this month is Everything I Never Told You by Celesta Eng. And it's going to be at the Senior Youth, it's going to be held at the Senior Youth Center, December 7th at 7:30.
Now, what's a senior youth center?
Next door.
The senior center.
Just, just next door, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And at what time?
7:30.
You might want to let people know that aren't the eBooks available on, on, the link on the?
The eBooks, yeah. I mean, if, well, if you visit our, our Facebook page, if you visit the Facebook page, you can get an, you can get a link to an eBook, but the library has ordered extra copies. So you may, so if you can read it between now and Thursday. We are encouraging that people who do come have read the book.
I can tell you with my limited eye, I wouldn't have read the whole book, but at least I'll have leafed through it and know what it's about.
There are going to be a lot more opportunities, also, moving forward. And there will be audiobooks available. We're working really closely with the library to make sure that they have copies of the books in multiple, in multiple forms of media.
Good. And I, I wanted to suggest something. I, when we had, you had the presentations the last time about the, the bags from the, for
Yes.
thing. I think it's a great idea, but it's nothing that's going to happen unless the, the stores put their darn plastic bags under the counter. Because they're the ones, they don't even ask you, do you have a bag?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
So moved. Second.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned. Good evening, everyone.